Okay, first item on the agenda for the open work session is the East Wycomica Little League Joint Use Agreement. Steve, you're still here. Come on up.
There's no representative from East?
No, not today. Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here. Yeah, we're here to discuss the renewal of the lease agreement with East Wycomica Little League. It's the little league that operates next to Winter Place Park. Their current lease was a five-year lease agreement that expires this coming February, so it will run out before the next season starts. So, we've met with the little league, we've made minor adjustments in terms of support that the county will offer, things like tree trimming, things that we're already doing. We're very satisfied with where we are in terms of the agreement, so we'd like to pursue an additional five-year lease with East Wycomica so that they can use that facility for its tenancy purpose.
I was on the East Wycomica board, and I was going through the lease, trying to find out things, and the previous director realized that they had not renewed the lease in many years, so I'm glad to see that you're here, working on it after we'd already signed a five-year lease agreement. It's a good organization, they do a lot of good things for the kids.
They do.
Is there anything major change from this year to the past? You said minor tweaks, is there anything?
No, no major changes.
So, it'll just be another five-year agreement?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Where would we go from here then, just looking forward with the agreement?
Yeah, procedurally, I'm not sure from this point, but we've drafted an agreement that we would like to proceed with signature, so I don't know if there needs to be another session.
It'll have to be a public hearing, we can have that on January the 17th.
Okay, January the 17th.
Would you like a representative from the league to be here for that?
It may be good in case there's some questions that the public may have.
Who's still the president, Phil?
Phil.
All right, any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thanks, Steve.
Second item on the agenda, discussion with Barron Creek with Mr. Strasburg. Mr. Young. Morning, gentlemen.
Morning again.
Morning again.
Hey, good morning.
Good morning.
I guess the reason today is, first and foremost, to kind of get an overview of the state meeting when they came to Barron Creek. I couldn't make that personally, I had some commitments that came up, but it would be, you know, I would be curious, I think it'd be good for the council to know exactly what transpired that day, and, you know, where we think we're headed with it. And anything that's developed since then, because I know we've gotten a lot of very positive letters since then from parties that are involved.
Yeah, I think it's best for Weston to be point person, because he's the person who's had the most interaction with the state officials, so why don't I just let Weston bring you up to date with what occurred at the meeting and what's transpired since.
Great, thank you. So, in essence, we had a very positive meeting with multiple state agencies and divisions within each agency. The two leads are the Maryland Department of the Environment, which had their Director of Water Management there, as well as dam safety, wetlands, and so forth.
And this was a site visit?
This was a site visit, yeah, this was at Barron Creek. The other major agency involved was DNR, so Department of Natural Resources. Their fishery folks, the conservation, and people who have program open space or money for property acquisition were there as well. We showed them the current state of things, we showed them what we, Public Works intends to do if we have the needed property to at least stabilize conditions out there to stop erosion, as well as what our thoughts were, you know, our proposal at the time for CIP, putting in culverts to restore the road, and what would be involved with that. The state confirmed that they are willing to help us expedite permitting that would be needed if we go that route. The, I'll say, course of action that was discussed there, the Director of Water Management with MDE was going to go back and talk with her attorneys, and they were going to draft a letter to the property owners. And from there, and the details of that letter are basically, it was who's at fault, and that it needs to be restored, needs to be stabilized, and maybe not restored is the best word, but at least protected. And our intentions at the moment are that we will follow up when the state delivers that letter with, again, you know, we're willing to work with you, and, again, we need the property in some form to do whatever work we propose. So, in a nutshell, that's where we are. We haven't heard from the state since that meeting.
Weston, have you heard from the property owner?
Not since the letters we received.
What type of timeline do you think, long shot, what type of timeline do you think we're working with as far as?
I could see, given the holidays and staff issues that all departments face this time of year, it would probably be January or February before we could realistically see a letter from the state, probably no later than the spring, because it became a hot item for them when they saw the extent of the washout and all of that. So, and we'll be ready to follow behind that. If the CIP project gets approved, we would have money available in July, and we'd have to start the permitting process before then, so.
So, I mean, it's my understanding that the two property owners that basically, on each side of the washout, are willing to work with the county, have granted the county temporary easement to do work on their property to stabilize the road. So, is it, I mean, what obstacles, I guess, besides funding are still left, funding and permitting, you know, unless some permitting goes through? I mean, there's not really any obstacles, I mean, we have to approve the money to do it, obviously, and you have to get the permits.
They have sent conditionary-type letters of approval.
You're talking about the property owner?
Property owners. Mr. Suggs, who we all know, has sent a letter saying that he would grant that, but if we don't do it the way he wants to, he's going to sue the county.
Well, I don't know, but he says, his conditions are, you know, they keep surprise the construction, and that he has reestablishing a temporary interest on Route 54. Those seem to be the conditions that he placed on the easement of the right-of-way. The issue about the lawsuit is that if a dam cannot be rebuilt, and that's, whether we do the road or not, I mean, that's if we leave it as it is, he reserves, he doesn't say he's going to sue, he says he reserves his legal right, you know, his legal options, which he has. I mean, that doesn't mean you're going to sue just because you reserve a legal option.
Well, we don't own any more than what we own now.
Yeah, yeah.
Why would we want to put ourselves back into the same situation? We need to either own the dam, the birthed, earthened dam.
I agree, yeah.
And so we can fix it right, because 10 years from now, or five years from now, when you and I may not be here, it could happen again. So, why do we want to set the county up for a potential problem again down the road?
No, I agree that that is the best course of action, and if, you know, there's something, I think we, you know, there's been discussion before about trying to find ways to acquire it, and I think Mr. Suggs said in his 2013 agreement that he would grant the county, once he transfers title of the property, that he'll grant the county, you know, give that to the county essentially. So, it seems that we have an agreement with him that at some point he will transfer this property to us.
He's been trying to sell it now for five years, I don't know when he's going to sell it.
Well, I'm not sure.
You know, so, I mean, I don't want to hold off the road based on when he does that.
No, no, I don't either, I don't either, I mean, and I, you know, whatever we need to do to do that, I mean, you know.
But we've got to own it.
Yeah, but, you know, the legal, his reservation of legal right would kick in if we don't do anything, too. That's...
No, he owns it, his legal right is, Ms. Buell, isn't her name Lynn Buell?
Lynn Buell.
Lynn Buell is sending Mr. Suggs a letter, it's now his responsibility to clean this up. So, it's on him. I'm hoping that letter from MDE will ask him to revisit it with the county and let us own it.
Well, and I think the ownership is important, and I support your efforts to do that, but it seems that Mr. Suggs has already granted us the permission to, the construction easement to, you know, restore, to maintain the road.
But it's a conditionary grant with the fact of if he's not happy with it, or he still has his right to sue us.
I don't think it is.
He wants a certain amount of water in there, well, I mean...
The, his, the conditions are, keep a surprise of the road construction, and so he can enter the property, and he says, finally, we wish to thank you. That's not a condition on that, on his easement, he's just letting us know that if we don't restore the dam, he reserves a legal right to do something, and that's...
What else do you need to know? I mean, I'm going by Mr. Wilbur's advice, so...
I'm going with the text of the letter here, by what it says, that even if we don't rebuild the dam, we're still in a position, so it seems to me that that's a separate issue, whether or not we rebuild the road or don't rebuild the road, Mr. Suggs reserves the right to sue us, which, I mean, anybody has a legal right to, you know, to go to the courts, that doesn't mean he's going to pursue, and I think it's, I'm sure Mr. Wilbur would tell you his case is pretty weak, as we've discussed before. So, that's not a threat to sue us, that just is reservation of legal right, that doesn't seem to be an impediment to restoring the road. It seems, he's granted the easement, and as long as we, you know, keep him comprised of this.
I guess I look at it differently, and I'm not going to put the county at risk, or sign on to putting the county at risk of a lawsuit because it doesn't have enough water in its pond.
Fair enough.
Now, I have offered to have Mr. Suggs actually tell us what he wants for the property, and more than happy to sit down and negotiate that, as Mr. Weston can tell you that Mr. Suggs' property would be a great asset for us in our whip program for the years to come. So, you know, it could work out very well for us.
I agree, I think it could, but...
I don't want to rush into it just to put back two culverts and try to fill in the hole.
I understand, and I guess what I would say is that the county, according to this, the county, if the county does nothing, the county is just as much at risk of a lawsuit as if it rebuilds a road.
No, I don't read it that way, the land is owned by Mr. Suggs. Contrary to whatever Mr. Suggs may say, that's not the way the law would write.
Well, exactly, and that's why I think his legal threat is pretty baseless, and that's what we could, and that's what, yeah.
And I hope it is, but I'm not going to leave the county at the cost of defending a lawsuit, baseless or not, when it can be worked out, you know, we just have to have common minds and let him realize he's got to pay for this cleanup now.
Yeah, no, if we can get him to cooperate, that would be...
And I'm just not going to rush it just to get the road back, I want to make sure we've got every avenue we can to make it so it's our road and we own it.
I have a question or statement. I think we're putting this way before the horse, way before the cart, and I don't think the cart's anywhere close to this horse. You know, we, you know, we still have a lot of issues and a lot of items that need to be worked out before we even need to address this with the state.
Well, there's a lot, there's a lot.
So, you know, to bring this up at this point, I think it's...
Well, the state is addressing it with us, John.
Exactly.
You know, so you say there's a lot of items, it all falls in the same place, it's all part of the same puzzle, and the state has addressed to us about cleaning up, what we're going to do, and that kind of stuff, and they have determined that Mr. Suggs owns that dam, just as we did.
And they're in the process of advising him, so this doesn't become an issue until he responds to what the state has to offer.
And she actually said it would probably be January before she could write the letter to him, so...
Right, I have another question, though. Mr. Atkins, who has the other portion of the road, has he had, made an agreement with the county to go ahead and transfer this portion? I don't, I haven't seen anything that indicates that he's interested in doing it.
So, what Mr. Jim Atkins owns, while he is a property owner, we value his input, we're not going to need property from him like we will need from Mr. Suggs on the upstream side of the dam, and then the Atkins Historical Society.
Well, he owns part of the road, though, doesn't he? But he owns, he owns part of the road, John, prior to the, prior to the area of damage. I mean, actually, the neck, I mean, the reality of it is, is that the next steps here are almost solely controlled by the state. You know, the state is going to send whatever letters they send to the, to the landowners in terms of stopping the silting into the creek, but in terms, Weston is at a standstill until the state advises us in writing as to what they will allow us to do in terms of restoration, and I think it was made very clear by the state officials who were there that day, that they are leaning towards agreeing to a culvert system and restoring the road over a culvert system, but I heard loud and clear that they have no appetite for a dam. So, until we get that from the state, and Weston knows what to engineer, we really can't do anything. That brings up another question, then. How much have we spent in resources on this issue that is new further along than it was four months ago? We've spent a tremendous amount of resources, I think, dollar-wise, haven't we?
Primarily staff time, there was a lot of equipment, there was a lot of equipment time trying to open the gates that were damaged during the event, but it's been primarily just staff time, you know, some law expenses, but...
So, we haven't hit $100,000 yet?
Oh, no, no, no. So, if we look at a timeline, we'll take the time out of the timeline, so we're looking at a letter to the landowners from the state.
Early in the year.
Early in the year. They will advise him on what his responsibilities are. Is it, there's no responsibility on Atkins Historical Trust, is it just the responsibility is laying on, lying on the Scruggs?
That's my understanding.
Well, no, we've got to go to the side, don't we have to go to the two?
Well, that's for the construction easement, but I think in terms of the restoration and the silting into the creek bed, that is really, that lies solely with Mr. Suggs.
So, we get, so we don't have any money invested that far, so we go from there, we go to deciding what we're going to do, after Mr. Scruggs makes his decision, whether we're going to do a culvert or a dam, and pretty much we're saying that a dam is out of the question, probably.
I don't get any sense from any of the state regulatory agencies that I have any appetite for a dam.
Okay, so, I do want to clear one thing up, and I wasn't going to bring this up, but you started mentioning equipment. There was a rumor going around that Mr. Atkins lifted the gate and bent the gate.
Mr. Atkins didn't do it, no.
No, not Mr. Atkins, it was Mr. Kenny.
I went to see Mr. Kenny, I think Mark did too, and he denies that, he says he doesn't have a backhoe or even access to a backhoe. So, that's something that probably needs, in the future, to be corrected, if there's any conversations, that he did not go down there and try to lift that gate that morning.
Yeah, I'll defer to the executive on that one.
I don't know where he...
I think it may have been a forklift.
Well, he said he didn't, they did not do that. He said they did not try to lift that gate that morning.
Okay.
So, he denied it, so anyway, I don't know where the rumor got started, but it could cause somebody problems down the road if somebody thought that happened, you know.
The issue on buying the property, I'm not familiar with exactly to what extent we're looking to do this, whether or not we would look at buying just that area where the road is going to be placed, whether we're buying the pond, whether we're talking about buying the whole house, what exactly is it that's being considered?
Well, whatever he's probably put up for sale, you know.
Whatever he'd like to sell.
Well, again, I'll back up, too, because I doubt the guy's going to just sell his pond and not his house, I don't know, but I mean...
And that would be fine, you know.
What does he have for sale? Is it, I'm assuming it's the entire property?
It's the entire property, is what he's been promoting for sale, yes.
So, I mean, I understand that we've incented through the whip program and all that, but we have a house, we'll have a house on that property, which I don't know if the county wants to own a house.
We don't want to own another house.
We do have to realize that by losing the dam, he has lost waterfront property, so he, and I believe in his letter, his reserving the right to, you know, file a lawsuit at a later date is because he has suffered property damage, or I guess property loss, property value loss, due to the pond going away. Now, we can say it was his fault for doing that, however, our actions can, yeah, I guess he feels we have some control over whether or not we can bring water back. So, if we were to purchase, say, the pond bottom in addition to what we need to reestablish the road, we could have a price that would make him whole, and then he's just selling a house and not worrying about a waterfront house, is the thought behind it.
Is, would that be an open space program?
Something like that.
What I would, what I would suggest to you, Joe, is that Project Open Space Acquisition Funding is pretty minimal right now, but, and I don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves, but there may be, there may be an opportunity to take existing land that the county owns that was acquired through Project Open Space and work a swap, and in working, and in working a swap, and I'm a long way from understanding all the intricacies, but if we could work a swap and acquire that pond bed and get whip credit for taking the requisite actions in that pond bed, that drains a 20-square-mile area, and we would get enormous whip credit, so that's an idea that we're preliminary looking at, but again, we need to understand what the state is and is not going to let us do before we begin to tilt windmills, if you will.
This was further down the road, and for thoughts further down the road, there's an organization that just bought 700 acres of land down the road from where I live, and they're digging ponds on this farm, it's called the Nature Conservatory. And I don't know, like, say we get further down the road, whether there could be some kind of work done with them, you know, they would want part of it, or, it works into what they buy, that's what they want.
Sure.
It's tough, where they restore, they're taking this land and restoring it back to the way it was in the 1700s, this land that they have acquired. So, anyway, that's something for further down the road that might be considered.
Yeah, that's certainly, we are...
They work off grant money, they get a lot of federal funding, so it might be something.
We're contemplating how we could get, obtain ownership of that pond bed so that we could do a series of whip projects that would go a long way to satisfying our total whip obligation, so, but again, you know, first question that has to be answered is, what is the state going to allow us to do there? Because Weston can't even begin preliminary engineering until we know that.
So, the balls are in the court.
Yeah, you know, and again, this is a, this is a busy time of year for, you know, the state is, as well as, you know, they're going to be going into their budget cycle as well, they're going into the General Assembly, so things don't move as quickly this time of year as they would at other times of the year. But suffice it to say that we are pursuing it without being overbearing.
I thought that was a good meeting that day.
It was an excellent meeting.
I thought it really was, everybody had input.
From an engineering perspective, Weston, there was some talk about having kind of raised culverts, maybe having two or three, I think the state said up to three feet of water wouldn't be considered a dam, you know, and obviously culverts that are just leveled and letting the water natural flow is cheaper.
Yes.
What's the difference between that and maybe raising them up a little bit and having a couple of feet of water in there?
Fisheries. Yeah, we'll need at least one down low to allow fish passage. However, putting, putting the others, raising them up, it would allow, it's pretty much how much water backs up, just like if you imagine a ditch, and if you move the pipe up two inches, you're going to have two inches of water, so there's a chance on larger rain events, you have more of a wet bottom, or it could look like a pond. However, there's still going to be that channel that allows the migratory varieties of fish to pass, pass up and down.
So, that's part, I mean, is that...
Yeah, that's what, that's what we would probably look at as well, by raising the pipe, yeah, we'd have to look at the design, sometimes the permitting, on the downstream end, that starts hitting tidal wetlands, so that footprint, we'd want to minimize, even though the state's willing to work with us, we need to make sure we're cognizant of the impacts that these pipes would have, and, yeah, just see, a part of it, again, is what the state will allow, we'll take a first stab at it, and then work with them from there.
Yes, to me, because Mr. Suggs has written, you know, he has to retain, you know, retain any legal remedies to attain assistance in preventing the pond from becoming woodlands, and it seems that if we have, you know, if it periodically floods in that way, that would kind of take care of that, and that would be a way to, you know, meet his conditions as well as, I think some of the local people would feel more comfortable with that, too, but...
Yeah, it's possible, there's no guarantee, I know with the double mills example, what was the pond bottom reforested, and once, once the trees were there, the state definitely said no ponding, and I, that's what he's getting at.
Yeah, I think that's what they're...
So, this road was always an easement across this property, is that true?
Well, to our knowledge, John, there was never any formal documentation, I mean, I'll defer to Ed, you know, back in the, in the 40s and the 50s, the state would come in and build road beds, we've never seen any documentation, I haven't even seen the documentation where the state deeded it over to the county.
Yeah, we were looking for that.
We're trying to find it.
So, the road was built by the state?
The road was built by the state, back when Old Ocean City Road was ostensibly Route 50, so...
Does Suggs, does the deed to his house show an easement on his property?
I haven't looked at it, Joe. I don't think we have any formal easement, no.
Well, there's one from 1961 that says, that talks about a right-of-way on there, and we mentioned that to you before, and I forgot to get that to you, I'm sorry. Yeah, I mean, but I gave a copy to Ed, and we can get that to you, you know, that was recorded in the court that said that, but I don't know the legal aspect of that or whatever.
See, one of the interesting things about this is that the right-of-way easement, and I haven't read it, but part of the problem with the right-of-way easement is, does it include the land that underlies the road bed that was constructed by the state? So, you know, you essentially may have an easement that is a, is a, is a thin layer across this dam and doesn't extend to the bottom of the dam itself. I'd have to read the easement to really understand what, in fact, the state got, which then they transferred to us, the gift that keeps on taking is right who we might say.
It was just a line on a map, so that's not going to help you in any, that's why it's unclear, yeah, that's why it's unclear, yeah.
So, I mean, it's really a very quirky situ, I've quite frankly never seen anything like it.
Any other questions, any comments?
We're just, again, Weston has to be diligent, urge the state to move things along, but you can, you can push too hard as well.
I mean, we appreciate their help, and their assistance will give us more, more of a hammer to go forward and get the road back.
I think the citizens, you know, will be asking questions and things, and I think we've got good answers for them, that we are doing something, you know, so they should be satisfied. Government doesn't work fast, that's for sure.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think we may take a...
Oh, you're taking lunch first?
Let me see what we have here on the agenda.
It's the radio system.
Radio system.
How long is that going to take?
As long as you would like it to.
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's pretty straightforward, I bet you 15 minutes.
Can we go to 12:30 then? Joe, is that okay?
We do have the Board of Education at 1 o'clock, gentlemen.
Yeah.
Okay, right.
It's up to you all.
I would say let's go to 12:30.
Just keep going.
John?
Sure.
It's only about a five-minute deal.
Yeah.
All right. I won't ask any questions.
As closer you get to lunch, less questions you get.
Dave, let us, let the public know who you are, if you could, please, thank you.
My name is David Ship, I'm the Director of Emergency Services for the county.
Thank you.
Once again, I'll let David walk council through the evolution of this, of this MOU. The MOU is a result of, like, it actually states in the MOU, is a result of the city taking a look at their old legacy radio system at the police department, usually, no one else in the city, and Public Works, but the fire department does not. They were in the same situation we are, and they have an old system that they need to replace. We've embarked upon replacing our system, of course, and worked our way through that, so we were approached by city officials to say, well, what would it take for us to come along on your radio system, take advantage of it? So, the best way I can say is, we have a radio system that we're building, and we've evaluated what their desire is, and it's reflected in the MOU, and they can utilize existing spaces that we have on our towers and in our shelters, and they will impact our operation, not at all, okay? What they gain from that is the same things we're gaining with... What they gain from that is the same things we're gaining with the new system, in-building coverage in the metro area. It's called REV-G standards, which means all of those structures, the towers and the shelters, will withstand one hundred and twenty mile an hour winds. And the back hall, which is the redundancy in the radio system, the way it communicates between the tower, so the transmissions continue to go out, we have a microwave back hall, we're also gonna have a fiber optic, so they're, a fiber. So they're, they're gonna gain that without having to build, build it themselves, but they do have, they're bringing two channels onto our system. Again, we can accommodate this with no impact on our operations. And just to enumerate, like, some of the equipments, their consoles, their transmitters, their cabinet, combiners, and portables, and that, those types of things. Now, they're gonna have warranties on all of their, their prop, all of the, the equipment that they're bringing, and they're gonna maintain that, okay?
This is a city, though.
It's a city, it is only the police department, okay, at this point. So they're, they're gonna be able to take advantage of all that, and again, at no cost to us. I believe the estimates for their participation, or they're, they're coming on, the expenditures going for their equipment's about one point four million dollars. The estimate for them to do a standalone system, I believe, in discussions, was about four point two million.
So, so we're saving them four million dollars by letting them use our system?
Three, well, we're letting them use our space.
Space, okay.
Yes, that's what we're doing. They're, they're bringing all of their infrastructure with them, and they're paying one point, I believe it's one point four million dollars is what they're making for that.
So, I guess my question was, are we saving them money by letting them use our space? Is it?
Yeah.
How much?
Three million. Well, the difference between the four point two and the-
Three.
Yeah, roughly.
Do you know where you're going with that?
It's probably you didn't get there before, you took your time.
Bear in mind, bear in mind, that the system that we're building is funded by county taxpayers, and that all city taxpayers are also county taxpayers.
I understand, we all, we all know that.
So, from our standpoint, and I don't wanna speak for David, but he and I discussed this at length, from our standpoint, from a public safety standpoint, from a, from an efficiency standpoint, from protecting the public standpoint, this is absolutely the right thing to do, absolutely the right thing to do. The city is picking up incremental costs that would be attributable to them coming on to our system, and, and as I said, from my own personal standpoint, not speaking for the executive, city residents or county taxpayers as well, so the, the eighteen million dollar system that we're building, they've paid their proportionate share, or are paying their proportionate share.
Who's gonna maintain their portion?
They will.
They will.
Yes, sir.
When, when they integrate, now, is, is their, their system antiquated to the point where it's necessary for them to make a move like this? Is that why they're doing it? Or, I, I understand the safety aspect, and it makes sense, really, for them to do it, but, but is their equipment outdated so much that this makes sense?
Only that David, essentially, yes. It's essentially the same reason we're replacing ours, these are old eight-hundred analog legacy systems, and, and they're not even supported by Motorola any longer. I've heard horror stories of people having to go to eBay to try to find parts to keep your system going.
Any other questions? Where does, I always ask this, where do we go from here? I mean, is this something that needs approval from the council, or, you know?
You know, that was an interesting question, John. I, I, you know, I had a discussion with Mr. Wilber about that, and to me, it was a gray area. I wasn't quite sure whether we needed council approval or not, but I think from a policy standpoint, I think it's something that council needed to be aware of and should be able to weigh in on, so I-
If, if we do it, it's no, no harm, no foul, we just-
I don't believe so.
We buy into it, we sign off on it. Just let us know how you wanna present it, resolution, get it, get it in here.
Okay.
If it ever became questioned, you could pass a resolution to that effect.
Exactly, yeah.
Simple.
All right, Mr. Shipley, thank you for what was described as your call-saving measures on that, this huge endeavor that we're undertaking.
Certainly welcome.
Thank you very much, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, have a good Christmas. Final item on the agenda before we break is the letter to the Eastern Shore delegation, reference of hunting, the second Sunday. I'm assuming everybody's had a chance to review this. Any questions or comments? Everybody will- Where did it come from?
It's, it's been requested a couple of different times, so we just decided, well, you know, let's go ahead and, you know, take that initiative and see if we can't move it forward.
We'll have a public meeting, public comment session, if just, I mean, let the public put their input on it, just in case there are those that might be opposed against it.
I guess we could do that, if it wouldn't hurt.
Time really isn't an issue, because the hunting season for this year is almost over.
Right.
Well, but, but legislation has to be, I mean, this is for the state to pass legislation.
If, if you were to forward a request for legislation, then it wouldn't take effect until next year, anyway.
Yeah. Well, but we have to, as Mark was suggesting, we do have to meet their, their deadlines.
Make sure it catches into-
And I know that their deadlines are usually, yeah.
I mean, could we mention, I, I mean, could we put it on the agenda that we'll take public, any public comments at our first meeting in January about this? I mean, it, I mean, we're, we're not making the actual decision on this, we're just recommending that the state take a decision.
You pretty much are.
Well, I mean, I mean, I mean, the state's gonna have a hearing on it.
Still, but we're pushing the issue.
Yeah, yeah, no, we are.
Our people we're representing getting their input in.
I, I think we can do that.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm saying, you know, in January, have, have something at our first meeting in January?
Yeah, we could, it, it's a little unorthodox, but we, we could certainly, I mean, it's, it's a good request. We could have a public hearing in reference to this, this letter. It's, it's nothing that has to be done formally, but I think Councilman Davis is right, it might be prudent, so if we can put that on the agenda.
Yeah, but my, my point was, if we do it in January, then we can get this letter out, if we decide to.
Doesn't matter, as long as you do it, because, anyway, I mean, we sit here and we approve a letter, and then they go along with it, then later on, the public come to us, say, but we didn't have our chance to put our input on it.
Yeah, right, that's a good point. Okay, any other questions in reference to the letter?
Sounds good to me.
All right.
Well, actually, remember, this would be a, a state action. All you're doing is, is either writing a letter and saying you support it, writing a letter saying you don't support it, or not do anything at all. It's, it's kinda like our elected Board of Education, it's, you're expressing, you're expressing a viewpoint, and Mr. Davis is encouraging that the public provide input into whatever that viewpoint should be.
Well, I, I think as Ernie knows, we tend to get blamed no matter what, so.
Yeah, I mean, just like what he just said, that was the same thing that happened with the, like, the school board the first time, you didn't get the public input, and they sent it back to us, and you had to go through the sessions for it.
So, it's a very good point. We'll put it in our first meeting in January. I guess we can do that, we have time to do that, the deadlines-